Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation with Reverend Darrell Keeney from Lighthouse Baptist Church, thirty-nine nineteen Green Avenue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united nation under our individual liberty and justice alone.
So let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this city. I thank you for this city, having lived here many years. God, I pray, as we, as the, on the agenda, there's some purchases of some vehicles for our law enforcement. God, pray they're reliable, but most importantly, I pray wisdom, protection for these dear men and women that run these vehicles, that operate them, and, and for our law enforcement personnel, God, I pray that you give them that extreme, extraordinary wisdom they need in that momentary decision that can literally be life-changing for them or others. God, protect them. Give them your safety and insight. And so, God, thanks for their service. Lord, I know it's not an easy job, so I thank for all those men and women who serve and protect us here in the city of Bellevue and the fine job they do. Father, also thank you for the beautiful natural resource we have in the Missouri River, and pray tonight even as consideration for bolstering American Heroes Park. Thank you for that, and thank you for being the God of creation for this fall season and the beauty of this season. And, Lord, we thank you for being the God who is in control, and thank you also for upcoming election, and just ask for wisdom for those that vote, praying in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, Reverend Keeney. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Shirley, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey?
Here.
Councilman Cook?
Here.
Councilman McCaw?
Here.
Councilman Priester? Councilwoman Burns?
Here.
Councilwoman Welch, thank you.
Just want to remind the council, if you'd refresh your computers right now, it might help. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. And item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports, five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. So item six, approval of claims, which was removed from the consent agenda. Is there any, is there a motion? Councilman Cook?
I, I, I just want to ask one question.
Good.
I'm sorry, so I apologize, Mayor. I got a, is five B, is five B five?
Oh, I had to read that. Um, I think it's Tuesday, November fifth, so I think we're missing an item five.
Do we need a vote on it, since it's, or usually you put green consent? I'm just asking.
It's, that's not a, that's not item number five, that's November fifth, so that's part of item four.
Oh, you're right.
But there is no item five, so it's...
I apologize. My mistake. Mayor, I'll make a, uh, motion. We approve the claims.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentations. We have none this evening. Item eight, organizational matters, there are none. Item nine, approved citizen communications, did not receive any. Item ten, liquor licenses, there are none. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, there are none. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A, ordinance number four-one-six-six, an ordinance to update the compensation ordinance. Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-six-six, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number four-one-five-seven, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and I'll open up twelve A for public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding ordinance number four-one-six-six? Please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Third reading and vote will be November sixth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading. Thirteen A, ordinance number four-one-six-seven, request to rezone lot one, Southeast Plaza, from M L to B G for the purpose of commercial development. Applicant Marathon Equity LLC, general location, nine oh nine Fort Crook Road North. And Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-six-seven, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number four-one-four-six, by changing the zone classification land located at or about nine oh, nine zero nine Fort Crook Road North, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. That second reading and public hearing will be November sixth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M. Item thirteen B, ordinance number four-one-six-eight, request to rezone lots one and two, Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, being a platting of tax lots, fifteen B one A one, fourteen A two B, fourteen A two B two, fifteen B one A two B, fifteen B one A three B, fifteen B one A four, fifteen B one B two, fifteen B one A two A, and fifteen B one A three A, all located in the southwest quarter of section twenty-five, township fourteen north, th- range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from R S Jeep, R S eighty-four to B G and R S eighty-four for the purpose of a food bank and existing schools facility, school facilities, and small subdivision plat, lots one and two, Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, applicant Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, general location one zero zero three Lincoln Road. Good luck, Shirley. Would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-six-eight, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number four-one-four-six, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about one zero zero three Lincoln Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Oh, you didn't have all those numbers.
No, I did not.
Uh, second reading and public hearing will be November sixth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, request for site plan approval for lot seven, Trigaron Town Center, for the purpose of a drive-through coffee restaurant and automobile parts and supply store. Applicant Betis Dev, Betis Dev Capeport LLC, uh, general location, South Twenty-Fifth Street and Town Center Drive. And I'll open up fourteen A for public hearing. If there's anyone here wanting to speak, please come forward. Just state your name and address and...
Hi, it's Aaron Wheezy, um, with Olson here on behalf of the applicant, Betis Development, um, two-one-one South Sixty-seventh Street, Suite two hundred. Um, and I am, the report covers it in detail. I'm here to answer any questions. The applicant will close on the property upon a positive outcome today, and then we'll move forward with the plat in both projects.
Okay, thank you for coming out. Any questions for Aaron? Okay, thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak regarding fourteen A, please come forward? Anybody wanting to speak regarding fourteen A? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item fourteen A.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item fourteen B, request for a conditional use permit for part of lot thirteen, north of the drainage ditch, and part of lot fourteen, Butterfield subdivision, except part for the N R D, all located in the northeast quarter of section ten, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, for the purpose of a concrete crushing, storage, and batch plant. Applicant Crushing Inc., general location, South Thirteenth Street and Capeport Road. And I'll open the fourteen B up for public hearing.
Doug Kellner with T D two, one oh eight three six Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant, um, available to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions for Councilman Cook?
I'm not sure. How, how many acres is this? Do you know?
Uh, in total, I don't know about, roughly ten, but I don't know the exact acreage.
As far as noise, I know that they're talking about this crushing concrete, and then you're batching, you're making the concrete for the concrete trucks to go out to site. The crushing part of it, what type of an operation is that as far as noise, dust? What, what's going to be stored there? Are we going to see, uh, uh, big piles of crush, crushed concrete? Sort of tell me what's going to go on there?
Right.
And then address the traffic, the noise, and, and the, uh, dust.
Well, the, the dust is, uh, they have to have suppression for it, so that, with their state permits and everything, they have to just, um, get rid of the dust with different types of sprayers and everything, just for air quality and, uh, their storm water permit also. Um, as far as traffic, we are working with the D O T, putting a D cell lane in to, to get off of the road off of, um, I s- assume up on Capeport is where you're thinking. Um, and then, uh, know, uh, piles of dirt or piles of material, there will be large piles of material on the site that come and go as crushing operations happen. You know, as material comes in that they have to crush, and then at the crush material before it gets hauled off again.
What's the noise on that?
Um, I don't know if I know a decimal. Do you know? About seventy decimals.
Well, can you compare that to something? What would be equal to seventy if I was standing, say, um, well, just explain to me what would also be at a level of seven?
Well, I mean, typically in a, in an industrial situation, that's acceptable from the property line out. Usually, probably sixty is code at the property line, maybe. Um, so the, the operation itself is loud, but then by the time you get to, you know, the property lines, then it dissipates down to about seventy, or sixty, I'm sorry. Um, I think vacuum cleaners are around eighty, seventy, eight eighty, somewhere in that range, so if that kind of gives you an idea.
So, will, will the crushing part of it pretty be, pretty much, I, I realize it probably depends on how much product you got, how much concrete you gotta do, but are we looking at, you know, starting at eight o'clock in the morning, going to six, I know there was some hours mentioned there, I just don't remember the planning, uh, maybe it was a planning.
I guess you're just asking, is it, is it a continuous operation?
Are you gonna run it once, um, um, you know, is it ran, ran twice a month? Is it ran every day, all day long?
Uh, no, it, it'll be run daily. I don't know. I mean, pretty much continuously, you don't, yeah, it really won't be shut down, so. I mean, obviously, if there's no material, it's shut down, but for the most part, it's, it's meant to run.
And when, and when you talk about the, the vacuuming part of it, how, how does that, I mean, is just, how does that, how does that work? We just turn it on a sprinkler and it's holding it down, or what, what do you mean by?
Oh, to, for the suppression, dust suppression?
Yeah, could, control that, I mean...
Do you want to talk about that, or?
I'm Lance Paulson with, uh, Crushing It, uh, two zero three zero eight Patton Street in Gretna. We operate two locations currently, uh, near residential neighborhoods, and don't have any current noise issues. Uh, the dust issue, we use a, it's called a water cannon, so it shoots a mist up over the dust, where the dust is produced coming out of the crusher. And as that water grabs onto the dust particulates and it falls out, brings it out of the air.
If I'm parking my car within a hundred feet of your property line, what will I expect to see on my car at the end of a, a long shift?
Yeah, y- you'll have some dust, uh, mostly from truck traffic, not from crushing. Uh, the crushing operation stays pretty localized, and then it comes off a conveyor, and there's a little dust there, and again, that's where we would shoot the water mist. But the truck traffic on site, we have water trucks that are on site, and they keep that down. There's always a limit to how much water you put down before you create a bigger mess, being tracked out on the road, which, of course, we can't do either. But, uh, you know, the dust is just mostly from truck traffic. Our current, our two operations now are both in, I would say, congested areas, and that's not, not become an issue.
But I guess they are held, the D E has guidelines that they have to follow for the industrial storm water permit.
And part of my concern is it's, it, I mean, we got a lot of things going around there off it. To, to the west is some homes, I mean, you gotta get across seventy-five to the south, there's homes. And I, my, my thought is, you know, windy day, you're, you're not working, it's Sunday, and the wind's going seventy miles an hour. You know, and you got these big piles of crushed concrete. I, I don't know what would happen. I mean, I don't know if nothing would happen, it'd be fine. I'm just struggling a little bit with the noise. I work close to a plant that chips trees. I know it's different, but they make the mulch. And I can come out, every day they're running their machines, I can probably come out and write my name on my car. And I know that some of the buildings around there have complained about their systems, their H VAC systems on roofs, you know. They're required to change a lot of filters, more than normal. Um, that area, even though there is going to be, you know, south and stuff, I mean, that's, that's our growth area. So I guess, I don't know if there, if there, if, if, if there's a big project coming up that you're saying, hey, we want to get close to it, if it's something temporary. Um, i- i- you know, I mean, I just, I, I, it's something we normally don't see. And I'm trying to struggle through this because it's difficult, once someone gets settled, and, and we get complaints, or we have issues, and we have problems, it's a little bit more difficult to maybe get them resolved. Uh, and, and then we get phone calls and stuff like that. So part of my, my big concern is just the location. And I, I don't know where your plan is out in Gretna. I know Gretna's bl- blown up. I don't know what, what type of zoning you're under, if you're under a, a C U P or just regular zoning. So I, I'm struggling with this, because I, I, I've, I've lived in Bellevue pretty much about sixty years of my life, and when we get someone in here, there, there's things sometimes that get in here, and then ten, fifteen years later, we're like, wow, that council, ten years ago, they made a mistake by maybe doing something or not doing something. And I'm just trying to predict the future, and will that really be a good thing for Bellevue, because our growth is that way. We, we can't go east, we can't go west, we can't go north. I mean, we got some west, but you're right in our growth pattern, kinda.
Yeah, this, uh, as far as dust coming off our stockpiles, that typically isn't a problem. Um, you know, the concrete material, it's, the powdery material isn't something that stays at the top. Um, so that typically is not a problem. In Gretna, uh, the crushing operation is within a thousand feet of residential area. Uh, it's right next to our office parking, where we have roughly thirty cars parked, um, every day. Uh, so we haven't had complaints. We don't have to wash our cars or, or anything like that. Um, downtown Omaha, we're, we're in a conditional use permit in both locations, in heavy industrial. Uh, so we have, uh, noise controls or noise limits, and we have dust control measures that we put in our operating plan.
You are downtown Omaha?
Yeah, we're on South Twenty-eighth Avenue, just right the four eighty, I eighty interchange there.
Tucked down and off the interstate?
Yeah, just right off to the
Yeah.
by the old Schuler Grain Tower. We have residences within five hundred feet of, of the crushing operation.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, our mission is to be good neighbor there. Obviously, it's per, looking at a permanent installation, uh, uh, the, the ditch along the south or the west side that curves around makes a very nice barrier from any kind of dust going very far. Uh, but we really aren't allowed and don't want dust to go off the property.
Well, I, I hear that. I mean, I understand that. Part of, another concern is traffic. Uh, I drive down Capeport Road frequently, and you're going up to a bend where, when you come up, if you're pulling out of that place, you're catching the top of cars as they're coming w- westbound. Yeah, I, I do have a problem, a, a truck full of concrete, a, a, a side dumper bringing in busted up concrete. I think it would be a struggle at times, probably a lot of times, just with the traffic coming and going from off it, to try to get out and to go westbound.
Yeah.
Because that's the only entrance or exit that I'm aware is for that property.
Right. Now, we'd, we'd be going a right-hand turn at all times.
Where are you going to go when you turn right? And you gotta go out to Papillion, or you gotta go somewhere, I mean...
Yeah, it curls around to, from Capeport to Fort Crook, and then back on seventy-five and back up, so...
And, and I, I understand what you're saying, but a lot of people are dumping there, and when they leave, they're just gonna leave. It's not, it's a median, that's open. There's nothing that says you can't take a left. I mean, I, I believe you saying we would turn right. And, and, but that's the people you control, maybe your direct employees.
Sure.
Can a guy, can a guy, I'm, I'm busting up my concrete, and I gotta pick up load, do I bring it to you and do you take it?
Sure.
Okay, so you'd have a lot of that traffic, too?
Sure. Yeah, it's very inconvenient to sit there and wait for an opening to go left.
Right.
At some point, people get used to not wanting to wait very long and turn right.
You should come down there about seven, eight o'clock in the morning, and three, four, five o'clock at night.
I have been.
You're not going to make that left turn.
No, we don't encourage it. We don't want them to. It's not that long of a drive to go around, so that's our plan.
But when you go around, now you're going south or north on Fort Crook. And so, I mean, you're still, if you go north, you're still going to come in to town, you know, versus trying to get out of town or go west.
Sure.
Yeah. All right, well, I'm done right now. Thank you, sir.
Tammy, I had a question. Was there, um, as, I was looking for the, um, response from the base. Is there any issues that they brought forward?
Yes, so they did submit comments. Um, they said, "The location is adjacent to multiple flight paths, and any use that produces visually obscuring material, i.e. dust clouds, will be a concern to Offutt Air Force Base. Adde- additionally, the potential material, material making its way into the levees and clogging it may impact flood mitigation on the installation and is of interest." So essentially, they had concerns, uh, primarily with the dust.
Same concerns the EPA basically would have. Problems. Any more questions? Council, Casey?
I was going to ask the applicant, but I, I guess it's actually mine are just comments and the same kind of concerns that, uh, Councilman Cook has. Um, I used to work next to Ready Mix Concrete Plant, and I had a nice Corvette, and I never drove it there because when I'd get off, especially if the wind was blowing to the east, it was covered with dust. So obviously, I think we all have a concern with dust. Uh, noise, I appreciate the, the comparison of the vacuum cleaner and, but my concern is the, the Trigaron Town Homes, and the closest Trigaron home is about five hundred yards. And if I had to listen to even a, a low noise vacuum cleaner constantly for, during your hours of operation, which I believe seven to six, and, uh, seven to noon on Saturday, I, that would be irritating, so I, I don't know. Can, can the folks five hundred yards away expect to hear that noise?
I, I'm sure you could hear it. Uh, again, we have, it's less than, I, I say less than a thousand, I'm gonna say six hundred feet in Gretna to the nearest residences. Um, we, we get no complaints on noise.
Feet, feet or yards?
Feet.
Feet.
And it's less than five hundred feet in downtown to the residences on Twenty-seventh Avenue. Again, no complaints on noise. Um, it's, it's a, surprisingly, the crushing is not an im- a real impact, it's just squeezing, and it makes a noise. Uh, but it's not anything that, um, would be like the wood chipper you mentioned. Uh, it's not that shrill.
No, I, I, I hear you. And I hear you. I, I was mainly just concerned about the dust.
Sure.
I, I realize that, you know, busted up wood versus concrete is probably a lot different.
Yeah, dust, dust is always a concern for all of us. Uh, it's a, I mean, it's a, it's a red flag for anybody that sees dust coming from, from the site, particularly a, a crushing. that sees dust coming from, from the site, particularly a, a crushing site. So we have a, a water truck that's on site all the time to suppress the dust and then the water cannons. We do have, uh, water that we'll use to pre-wet all the piles, cause if we can wet it ahead of the crushing, that just helps the dust control. Again, we have, uh, people constantly videoing our operation downtown. Haven't had any issues, uh, haven't been, uh, had to go, hadn't, hadn't to go, go address anything with them. Uh, we encourage them to come through, so we wanna run that kind of operation if we're gonna do this kind of investment.
To, to the point, uh, Councilman Cook made about just, that's our area growth. If I'm driving down Highway seventy-five, how, how much of that am I gonna see? How high are those piles?
Oh, the, I mean, the piles vary. You'll see it. Uh, this, I mean, this is a very visible site, so you will see this material.
And did I understand correctly that the majority of the operation is not permanent? You're not putting in foundations and building equipment? Other than a restroom is, that whatever.
Right, restroom is required. Uh, that will be clear up by the entrance, which is clear up in the northwest corner. The the growth pattern, I mean, that's the attractiveness for, for the location. It's a manufacturing area, uh, industrial area, so, uh, the material we produce is what's used for base material for roads and for slab-on-grade, uh, building pads. Um, for landscapers, uh, those are our, those are our primary customers. So this would be for their sake, to keep material close and available. Uh, so that is the attractiveness of it. The ready mix portion is intended to be, uh, until they, I guess they've been trying for a long time to find another location and haven't yet. So, once they do, they'll move further south, where your growth's continuing. Again, I'm not sure when you parked your Corvette there, but they're under some pretty strict dust control guidelines now too, so I don't think they'd get by with that nowadays.
When, when, in your experience, when these type of operations go in, do they, do they stay for a long time or do they kind of go with development?
No, no, this, this would stay for a long time. Not the ready mix portion so much. This is not an ideal spot for them, but they, uh, have a lot of, contracts with the Offutt and so they need the accessibility.
Thank you.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Tammy, I have a question for you and, and Lance, you may wanna respond to this too. They're asking for a, a CUP. And can you explain why the CUP or why not a CUP and what scenarios would play out?
So, the property they want to be on is currently zoned MH, which is heavy manufacturing. Um, MH allows as a permitted use or allows by right, um, a temporary recycling plant for concrete or temporary batch plants. Temporary is de- defined as not to exceed thirty-six months of operation. As Mr. Paulson pointed out, they want to be there permanently or more than thirty-six months. That requires the conditional use permit. So, the conditional use permit request is being made because the applicant desires to be there more than thirty-six months.
If, 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 if it was denied, after thirty-six months, they could go back to the city and request a CUP or go another thirty-six months. Now, I realize from maybe a business standpoint, that's not the best way to.
Well, there's certain, there's certain statutory requirements. I don't remember off the top of my head. If they're denied, there's a certain timeframe where they cannot come back. Um, I don't know if, again, we'd have to research that. I don't know if they'd be able to come back, um, in that three-year timeframe, but, um, if they were denied tonight, they could do the temporary concrete crushing or batch plant as long as they weren't there more than thirty-six months.
I'm just gonna ask how you feel about that. I mean, would, 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 would you move the operation in three months and try to find a, maybe a better location where the development is more?
Yeah, in thirty-six months, uh, I, obviously, there's a front-end investment that if you can't contain or can't recapture, that's a problem. Uh, makes it almost unviable. I don't know a better location. There's not any residential growth nearby within the, say, thousand feet mark that, that I've referred to in Gretna or Omaha. So we're not anticipating houses to come up around us or, the traffic is what it is. We're not gonna complicate that anymore. We're gonna just adapt to it. Uh, the dust control with the, with the ditch on two sides of us and then manufacturing to the north is about a perfect situation for mitigating dust and not having it be an impact. Uh, and the same with the noise. Those, Ter- um, Terragon or, am I saying that right? Trigaran. If, if this becomes a problem, it'd just be astonishing based on our other two experiences. I'm not saying they won't hear it, but I don't think it'll be an annoyance. No, obviously, that's my opinion, but, we, uh, we office right next to a crushing plant and people don't even realize it. So in answer to your question, no, it makes, makes it very unappealing to move out in thirty-six months. Um, the ready mix may or may not, depending on availability of other suitable sites that are permissible in that part of the county. I do know they wanna move. They don't wanna stay there, uh, due to traffic. But for us, as a crushing operation, it's, it's pretty ideal.
What if there was a motion made where, where we would delay this for a month? I mean, I wouldn't mind visiting your sites and maybe walking around in neighborhoods. Would it cause you, I mean, we're short two council members, unfortunately, but would it be? I mean, is it doable that if, if we would delay this? Cause I, I don't know if any of the other council members, I've just never been by one of these. I could tell you, I know what you're talking over there off of, uh, Interstate eighty. If you ask me what I thought about it just on site, I would say I don't want it around my house or my property or my business, to be honest with you.
Sure.
So, i- but I realize probably a need for it. I don't know if it would, if it would put you in a difficult position. I don't know what other council members think of. But I would at least be willing over the next month, trying to maybe go to both sites and maybe even walk the neighborhood and maybe talk to some residents. Cause I, 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 I'm, I, I'm, I'm struggling with this to support it, to be honest. I don't know. I think you mentioned that you're, you're, you're at those both sites, you can stay there permanently. And I would imagine if ten, twenty years, you wanted to step out, someone would just buy it and keep it going. So I, I just don't see where, where it would ever go away. And, and I know it's not right on top of it, but the city is making a significant investment to the south of there. Huge investment.
Sure.
By our contribution and other property developers will be millions. And I just hate to see dust and noise and traffic issues and a lot of, and, 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 as an example, I've been down in that area where you got the one in, in Omaha. But I wanna see how you get out of there, because you probably shoot out to Forty-second Street and then you're gone. Um, I think it's a little bit different down there, trying to get out of there. And I don't know where the houses are. There's a lot of trees, there's a lot of growth around you, where out here, there's nothing. Um, so I mean, that could silence some of the, your noise too from neighbors. So I'd really like to go out to those sites and be standing there when the operation is going and then see from my distance of getting away from it, maybe talking to neighbors and businesses and see truly how they feel about the operation.
Well, I, I would encourage you anytime to come see our operations. Uh, we put together an operating plan to address a lot of these issues and we expect to follow that plan as we are in other places. I do think, and I don't know, but if we violate the noise controls or the dust controls, I mean, we lose our permit. So I don't, I don't know that you're just stuck with a bad operation. I mean, I, I do think you have some controls over how we.
No, I, and I would agree with that, but usually those end up in court. And then everybody spends a lot of money.
Sure.
So.
And my perspective would be that usually we try to address them and not go to court.
I, I'm telling you, I, I believe what you're telling me. I just don't know about the next guy or gal that owns a business. And, and I will tell you my experience. In law enforcement is, everybody has a good intent until everything gets turned upside down.
Sure.
And, and then all heck breaks loose, so.
We've, we've been operating in Gretna for seven years, um, on a conditional use permit, uh, right, right in the heart of residential and industrial and commercial area and the traffic is not near what you have on Cape Art, but, but heavy. In downtown, uh, we got that permit in April and we've been operating since April down there. The traffic flow is in front of Dinkers on Twenty-ninth Avenue, under the interstate to our location and then back out through the residential area. We don't go south, cause we can't make those turns. So, um, I welcome your participation and, and visit anytime. Uh, I do want you to exercise the controls you have over the permit if we don't operate. My biggest hesitancy personally as the owner, representative, is, uh, to delay it, uh, further. Pushes us, we have a number of improvements to make before we can operate. A hammerhead intersection that we're put in and then the acceleration lanes. Um, that will push that to next year if this goes into cold weather.
I understand. I, I, my fear is, is we're down a couple of council members and I would truly like to get out. I, 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 I promise you, I will call you and come out and stand on both your properties and watch this operation. But I can't promise you I can do it in the next two weeks, but I would come at our second meeting, before our second meeting in November. Come and see what's going on. Now, I mean, we can move forward, I.
I, that's totally up to you. Obviously, uh, we've been at this process for a couple of years. Two weeks is not gonna kill us.
Well, it's gonna be more than two weeks.
Four weeks is not gonna kill us.
Four or five weeks.
At some point, it, you know, I guess it boils down to intent. If it's not the kind of operation you want, we should probably been having discussions a long time ago.
This is the first time we've talked. And so, you know, and, and we could probably do it our next meeting, cause I think we got three weeks, don't we? Yeah, I mean, I think I can get down there in three weeks. I, I literally wanna come and visit and see and then I wanna walk to businesses and I will do that. So, I forgot, we got an extra Tuesday in this month. So, if you, I mean, I don't know what the council wants to do. I'm not trying to speak for the council. I'm just saying, if we vote and I'm sitting here and I'm struggling with this, we don't have a lot of numbers here.
Sure.
And I think if I could go out there and see it and witness it, and I will knock on doors or go in businesses and talk to people. But I, I forgot we had an extra Tuesday. I, I, I would, if you wanna vote, we'll vote tonight. But if, if you wanna wait till our next meeting, I'll come out and visit you and maybe drag someone with me.
Well, I sincerely want your support.
Yeah, and I would just add to that. I, I'd feel much more comfortable speaking to somebody who listens to Garen to tell him we went out and looked at this operation at two other locations. We didn't see an issue, so we just didn't blanketly say yes. Not, you seem like a very honest, uh, upright person, but, uh, as was said, sometimes things go south and we, we get surprised and then we have to live with the results of that, so. I, I would be in favor of delaying to our next meeting if, if you can live with that.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is open for fourteen B, fourteen, there, right? Fourteen B. And just please state your name, address, and we'll, instead of three minutes, we'll give five minutes since the room's not full, so. You have five minutes to speak and if, uh, we'll give you a thirty-second warning and try to wrap it up.
Yeah, I don't think I'll take more than a minute or two. I'm James Ludwig. On the property one three oh three three, South Thirteenth, which is a couple lots north of the one you're working on the permit. And I have no concerns with noise or dust or anything like that. But along the north side of this property is a drainage ditch that, um, drains everything south of Cape Art Road and east of Thirteenth. All the, all the surface water goes through that. And so, I guess I would be looking for an assurance about that, uh, remaining open. Over the years, there've been some issues with that ditch not being as open as it could be. It's open beautifully now. But when it's not open, there's flooding that starts. This property, uh, that ditch goes into a drainway on the north side. And there's another drainway on, which would be the southwest corner. Uh, so those would be concerns to me. I, I don't know that this applies. I attended meetings about, after the two thousand nineteen floods, uh, there were meetings about changing the flood plain. And my understanding, I attended meetings in which descriptions were given of the proposed flood plain, that this whole property would be in the flood plain when and if that happens. But that's, that's not my, um, primary concern.
Mr. Ludwig, how, how long have you been down in that area?
Since nineteen eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
I was just gonna, I didn't know what your business was. I was just gonna say maybe I'd stop by and talk to.
I'm a retired guy. I'm a landlord of a warehouse down there now. I don't think my tenant has any concerns, real concerns about this, but, uh, you know, looking at it and, you know, that whole property lays a little bit low. I don't now, but I used to own the property. Right up next to the railroad track there and keeping that dry was sometimes a, uh, an issue.
Thank you.
From the planning commission that there's a permit required because it is close to the drainage ditch?
Yes, so there will be, the NRD has reviewed this. Um, the Corps will have to do certain review um, because of its proximity to the levee. And then, of, of course, our public works engineers review it as well.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing's still open. Does anybody else, else wanna speak regarding fourteen B? Please come forward. Anybody else wanting to speak? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing for fourteen B and, uh, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I don't know the date. November sixth. I'll make a motion that we continue. So we'll push it to Wednesday, November sixth is our next council meeting. Uh, so I wanna continue item number fourteen B to November sixth.
Second. Okay, motion by Cook, second by Burns to continue fourteen B to the November sixth meeting and we will have a public hearing again as well. Is that correct? Any questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item fourteen C, request for a conditional use permit for Lot Seven Deets Meadows for the purpose of a specialized assisted living facility for elderly disabled adults age fifty-five plus. Applicant of Bangwa and Duma, location thirty-seven oh eight Green Avenue. And I'll open up fourteen C for public hearing. Is there anyone here wanting to speak? Please come forward.
Hi. Hi, I'm Lisa Rays, I live at thirty-seven sixteen Green Avenue, um, two doors down from this property to the west side. Um, the applicant is want to open up a twenty-four hour care for elderly and disabilities. Um, over the age of fifty-five. Um, my concerns, do I get five minutes? Last time I ran over and I didn't understand that, um, we only get three minutes. Um, at the last meeting, um, there were some issues come up and debate on. A few of the items on here, the applicant states that it's a four bedroom and the max would be four residents at this place. And actually, it's a three bedroom home, the basement, the bedroom, the fourth bedroom is located in the basement and it's. Doesn't have on those egress windows, so they're um, not four bedrooms in that. Um, right now, I, I grew up in the neighborhood, um, I bought the house from my parents nine years ago, so I. Been a resident of this community for over fifty years and um. The house, when it was sold about a year and a half ago, it's right now listed as an Airbnb. And there's been complaints on the website for Airbnb from guests and stuff and. The owners really don't take care of the property or um, make sure that it's well kept. Our neighborhood is well kept, yard landscaping and things like that. Um, so my concern is, um, if this is gonna be ran for twenty-four hours um, operation, seven days a week. Um, with staff, my main concern is the parking. Um, and her applicant, she says there's room for four, four cars, one being in the garage and three on the driveway. And honestly, there's only two cars that can fit on the driveway. Um, without being into the, the sidewalk and the streets. Um, the other part of it was the on-street parking. Um, this property sits pretty much on top of a hill. And Green Ave from thirty-sixth Street to forty-second Street is a corridor for not only buses and school. Um, but fire, ambulances, um, and then your normal in and out. From the residents in the community in our neighborhood, um, there's a lot of traffic during these hours and. She's saying in her applicant that they would have a minimum of two to three staff on site during the daytime hours. And one to two staffs during the evening hours and overnights. Um, our concern is where are they gonna park on the side street or on the, on the street parking? Um, Alder Gates Church is across the street from them and they have adequate parking for their, um, to accommodate their needs. Um, so, there's also a preschool operated out of Alder Gates Church. Um, they rent the lower half of the church and their operating hours are from eight to two-thirty Monday through Friday. So they have parents dropping off their kids and if, I don't know if we can pull up a picture like we did last time of the lot. Um, so, the property that we're talking about is their driveway enters. Right across the street from where parents drop off their kids and. There, I'm just more concerned for safety at that point because parents coming out of the bottom of Alder Gates Church where they pick up their kids. Would not be able to see or have good uh sight of cars coming up, um, the hill. The other part about that too is since we are a corridor from thirty-sixth Street to forty-second Street. For not only school kids driving to five of the major uh schools in our, in our district and, or in our area. It's also like in the wintertime, it's a hill, so a lot of times we get stuck on the hill. And with cars parked on the south side of that property, plows won't be able to get a good um clearance of all that. So that's my, uh, not just my concern, but my neighbors too who couldn't be here tonight. So, the other part that I seen in here where.
Ma'am, you have thirty seconds remaining.
Okay, thank you. Um, in section seven of this, this um pamph, pamphlet that I have. Um, in section seven, it says, the zoning ordinance requires no conditional use permit shall be granted unless the planning commission or city council finds that. The establishment maintains or operates the condition use will not be detrimental to the endanger, or endanger the public. Um, health, safety, moral comfort or general welfare of the community. Allowing this to happen is gonna put our neighborhood in, um, not a good situation.
That's, your, your time is finished.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak uh regarding fourteen C, please come forward. Seeing nobody else, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion or questions, motion?
I, I would, I was just gonna make a comment that I, I, I don't think the applicants here are not to.
No.
Yeah, so, I, I had a lot of questions for the applicant. I'd be talking to myself, so I won't ask.
Councilman Cook.
Just a question, did anybody hear from the applicant, like they couldn't make it tonight or there was a problem?
No, I did not, I mean, they were notified of the date, but I did not receive any communication from them that they would not be here.
Okay, um, the planning commission denied it, is that correct, Tammy?
Correct.
And I would like to make that motion, but I got a question for you.
Sure.
Um, do we have to, I noticed the uh, um, Lisa, the lady that was just talking referred to section seven. In the, in the motion made by the planning commission, they referred to a section six point.
She's referring, yeah, she's referring to paragraph seven, it actually is.
So, i- if we're ready, I'll make a motion.
Yep, we can have questions if we, go ahead and make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion that we deny the request for a conditional use permit. At this thirty's, um.
Thirty-seven oh eight.
Thirty-seven oh eight Green Avenue. Do I need to make a reason, but do I need to say that comment, Tammy?
Yes, I would, if you are wanting to deny it based on section six point oh six, I'd make that.
Uh, denial based upon nonconformance with section six point zero six zoning ordinance.
Second. Okay, motion by Cook, second by Casey. As just stated, denying um, subject to the six point oh six. Ordinance. Any comments or questions? Councilman Burns.
I just wanted to use one clarification, because we're always used to uh voting in the affirmative, so a vote yes is voting it down. Or denying it, okay, just wanted to make.
Alright, um, please vote, so vote yes is denying it.
All voted yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item fifteen resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two zero two four dash two nine. Request to amend the redevelopment plan for lot one Southeast Plaza. Applicant Marathon Equity LLC, general location nine oh nine Fort Crook Road North. And uh, staff has uh requested to continue this item. Um, is there council member would want to make that motion or? Councilman Cook.
When do they want it continued to?
Uh, to the November sixth meeting.
I'll make a motion that we continue item fifteen A to November sixth.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns to continue item fifteen A to the November sixth meeting. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen B, approval of the redevelopment agreement and redevelopment promissory note. Allowing up to one million, one hundred thousand dollars plus accrued interest to offset. TIF eligible expenses for here, there and everywhere LLC. Redevelopment project located at two-three oh two Lincoln Road, tax lot two. Here and there addition to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and authorize the mayor to sign, do I have a motion? Councilman Burns, or?
I think there's been a request to continue this. I don't mean to interrupt.
Let me draw here.
Yeah, I'll, well, I.
I'll make a motion, we continue it to November nineteenth.
I'll second that.
I apologize.
Okay, motion by Cook, second by Burns to continue item sixteen B to the November nineteenth meeting. Any comments or questions? Alright, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the retail sales agreement with AVI Systems Inc. for upgrading. AV equipment at training site in an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve item sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Casey, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen D, approve the purchase of the mobile command post trailer for the police and fire departments. In an amount not to exceed four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen E, approve the purchase of twenty-five laptop computers. With extended warranty and service support in an amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifteen cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, make motion to approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw, comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen F, approve and authorize Captain Melvin to sign the master services agreement with Informian. For the use of investigation database in an amount not to exceed seventeen hundred and fifty dollars per year, do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve item sixteen F.
Second.
By Burns, second by McCaw, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen G, approve. Approval of the purchase request for six Ford Explorer Police Cruisers in an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Make the motion to approve item sixteen G.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen H, approval of the purchase request for five Chevrolet Malibu sedans for police department. In an amount not to exceed one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, make a motion, we approve item sixteen H.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Casey, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen I, approval of the purchase request for a Can-Am Defender UTV. For the police department in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Motion to approve item sixteen I.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Cook, any comments or questions?
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen J, approval to purchase Motorola in-car video recording system and body cams in an amount not to exceed eighty-seven thousand. Three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve item sixteen J.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Item sixteen K, approval of the purchase of twenty-five portable police radios for police department. In an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents, do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, this is beginning to look like Christmas Day for Chief Clary, uh, motion to approve item sixteen K.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns, any comments or questions? Oh, please vote, sorry. I was just looking at the frown on Rich's face back there.
All in favor, motion carried.
Item sixteen L, approved purchase of a new Elgin Street Sweeper from McQueen Equipment with a trade of. Of two thousand fourteen Elgin Pelicon. Pelican in an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and six dollars and fifty cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve sixty, item sixteen L.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen M, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the master agreement, work order number two with Olson for the Bellevue Entertainment District. In an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve item sixteen M.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Casey, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Item sixteen, thank you, item sixteen N, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with MAPPA. Establishing terms and conditions for future improvements on thirty-sixth Street project from Twin Creek Drive to Rayner Drive, do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve item sixteen N.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Cook, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen O, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal with Sun Valley Landscaping for a north side erosion solution. At fifteen ten Wall Street and Wilshire Drive in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-seven cents, do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve item sixteen O.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen P, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal with Midwest for right-of-way easement acquisition for college height stormwater, outfall, repair easement. Acquisition in an amount of four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, motion to approve item sixteen P.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen Q, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Creative Sites LLC for the American Heroes Park Playground. In an amount not to exceed two million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen Q.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns, any comments or questions?
I don't know if Jim or Tammy, um, wh- where will this actually sort of set?
It will set in the area between the main drive that goes north into American Heroes and the lake. And it'll be north of that south parking lot and kinda east of the existing parking lot where the soccer fields are.
Ah, I just, you just lost me.
I'm sorry, so.
I didn't know there were soccer fields down there.
Picture where the soccer fields are. And then the nine-one-one.
Okay.
Um, monument, it'll be east of that between the road and the lake in that green area.
Kinda catty corner to those parking places.
So, it will be close to. So it will be close to the football fields parking lot?
Yep, yes, it'll be directly across from that.
And it's, it's, I mean, it, it's a huge-
Yes, it is.
Thing, and, and there's good level space just to go there and, and?
It slopes to the lake, but the contractor will be kinda stair-stepping it as well as he'll do some cutting and then filling to level it out as much as they can.
Okay. So Tammy, were you, I don't know if you're controlling that. Where's it gonna go?
Right above those parking, right in that, right there.
Go to the-
Go to your left?
To your left.
Our-
Move to the left, Tammy.
Your arrow.
With your arrow.
And then down?
No, just, just with your arrow.
I'm sorry.
Just right to the right of that arrow.
Right there, right where that arrow is, right there.
Yep, right there.
All right, just, I just, I just don't like when we pack everything in and, but, no, I'm good with it. I think it's gonna bring a ton of people down to that park.
Councilman Casey?
Thanks. I, I, I'm good with it also, but I wonder if you or, or Mr. Risto could share what future amenities are planned for that area and what American Heroes Park might look like five or two years from now.
So we still, we still have the amphitheater planned in the area. It's just, we benched that with the entertainment district kinda tasking us this year, but north of where that particular playground will go would be where the entertainment or, um, entertainment, I'm sorry. Amphitheater will go, see where that, there's like a little gray pad there. The amphitheater will go in that area. And there's still some potential for maybe some other amenities to the north where there's, uh, the public restroom will go up in that area with some other stuff to it, but the, the next phase in the next year or two will be the amphitheater. So over a period of time, and because of the, the size of that park and that we host the, um, Bellevue Rocks the River, that's, that uses up a large part of that, so we'll do some redoing as far as what we go, but I think you'll also look a little bit to the north of the parking lot too. That's our land, so we have some ability to go north and add more into that park there if we, if we need to, so.
Are there any plans to bring that Children's Lewis and Clark interpretive art mural that's at Hayward Park now, which obviously nobody sees it because nobody goes to Hayward Park anymore, over to that area?
Yeah, that's been discussed. It's just trying to figure out where we wanna put it, so we'd like to move it out of there, and I, I would say probably within a year, we'll probably do that too.
Great, super. Yeah, I know it's a lot of, Senator Hartnett was, went behind that, a lot of other folks. Hate to see it just sit there and nobody see it.
It's kind of in an odd spot now, so.
All right, thank you.
I don't know if it fits on this agenda, but I just wanna compliment Public Works and administration for, for, uh, making the walls look nice around the cemetery and the Reed Center. I think those walls make a, a huge difference, so it looks real nice. Okay, we are, we have a motion by Cook, second by Burns to approve sixteen Q. And any other questions or comments? Please vote.
I fell asleep. All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item seventeen, Administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. October report will be attached to the November fifth council packet. We have no closed session, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilman Burns?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Casey. Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Still with us, Rich?